November the sixth, twenty twenty-three for the county commissioners. Commissioner Hopkins, if you would say the prayer and Commissioner Hickox, if you would lead us in the pledge, please.
Dear Heavenly Father, I come before you in Jesus' holy name. Lord, I ask you to give us the wisdom to make the right decisions for Wayne County. You're Alpha and Omega, you're the beginning and end. And Lord God, thank you for blessing this county. It's a great county to live in and I'm privileged to be a part of it. Continue to give us the wisdom, Lord, to do your will. In Jesus' holy name, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business is, pull your microphones to you, please. First item of business is the adoption of the agenda. I do have one thing I would like to add. We spoke about the memorandum of understanding for EAM, the abatement that they have. I would like to add that as one of our line items. Under new business. I guess that'll be item in, if we can, if we vote to approve that. Or at least consider or approve the MOU for EAM in their expansion.
Are you making that as a motion, Chairman?
Yes, that we add that to it as a line item in. Does anybody have anything else?
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Gordon.
Yes.
Commissioner McCrary.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Hickox.
Yes.
Yeah, we do, there's a new agenda, we had to add something on.
Yep, you got it. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Next item is approval of the minutes for the regular minutes for October the second, twenty twenty-three, and our called meeting for October the twentieth, twenty twenty-three. I'll make a motion to approve this minute.
Second, Mr. Trump.
Thank you. Any comments? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner McCrary.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Hickox.
Yes.
Commissioner Gordon.
Yes. Next item is presentations and announcements. We have Mr. Robertson. I am going to read the rules of decorum. I don't think it'll be from Mr. Robertson, but just so everybody knows that the chair shall enforce the rules of decorum. The purpose of the meeting of the Board of Commissioners is conduct county business meetings shall be conducted in an orderly and respectful fashion. They are not a forum to belittle, ridicule, or embarrass county commissioners, other county officials, county employees, or any others. We ask that you, everybody remain silent during the meeting as business is conducted. Anyone wishing to speak must be recognized by the chair. All meeting attendees must conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Personal attacks and derogatory and inappropriate remarks are not permitted. Members of the public are expected to comply with the rules of decorum established. We will not answer any questions at this time. We are just here to listen to your statements. Mr. Robertson.
Thank y'all. Appreciate y'all giving me an opportunity to film a copy of y'all.
Oh, and there's a limit of five minutes.
You remembered last time, don't you?
You talk slow like I do.
There's a number of us at the sheriff's office that, you know, felt like everybody's quick to want to complain about one thing or the other. And we just wanted to tell the commission that we appreciate what y'all did with our pay adjustments that'll take back two thousand and twenty-four. Actually, you're bringing us from the lowest paid sheriff's office in the region to where we're compatible with, you know, something more comparable with everybody else in the area, you know, with the exception of some places like Glenn that just don't have the resources to compete with them. But I just felt like we needed to tell y'all, and as you see, there's a number of people from the sheriff's office here. There are more people wanting to come, but, you know, some people already had prior obligations when this was set, and some people are at work, but at least for the people at the sheriff's office. Thank you for what you did. It means a lot to us.
Thank you. Means a lot for your staff.
We also would like to express our gratitude to new county administrator, Paul Droudi, and to the sheriff, who, you know, worked tirelessly to get some stats up and to get with y'all on this. So we want to thank them too. Thank the sheriff, thank the county administrator, thank the board of commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. You got four more minutes.
Thank the sheriff's office employees for the job that it is.
Yes, well, and I really believe that that's the desire of this commission, is to do what's right and try to, you know, fair pay. We are all struggling with that. The thanks doesn't really go to us, it goes to the taxpayers, because they are the ones that pay for it. We are just the ones that allocate it. And I'm thankful for them for giving us the opportunity to be representative of their money and be able to give a portion back to y'all because of the services that y'all provide for us. It means a lot whether, any of our first responders, when they can be there and be there in a timely fashion, I think that means the world to any citizen, especially if they're in dire needs, because normally when they call nine-one-one, they want somebody there ASAP. And we appreciate the job y'all do and just thankful that we're able to compensate y'all a little bit for it. I don't think we'll ever be able to pay you for what you've worth, but at least we can get it up there a little bit. Next item, citizens concerned, Ms. Daniels.
Come on, man. And I hope she don't, and I know she don't mind me saying it, but I'm really speaking through someone else. I'm speaking from the grave of Michael Swin, because this is something that was really, really passionate, he was really passionate about. And I felt compelled as a former member of Saint John Holy Church to come and ask the questions that I'm asking a lot of people from Popular Street area and Saint John is represented here tonight. I'm gonna stick to my script, but I did need to share that with you all. So good evening and greetings to everyone in your respective places. I'm quite sure everybody knows who I am, but I'm introducing myself as protocol calls. I am Sherri Jones Daniel, affectionately known by my community as Shag. I've been a citizen of Wayne County for over fifty-seven years. This is my home. I must also share the disclaimer that I am here as a citizen of Wayne County and not as a representative of the Wayne County School Board. This view, these views and statements and sentiments are the sole expressions of mine and are completely separate from the school board. I will not entertain any questions or concerns pertaining to the Wayne County School Board or any of its vested interests. Any questions or concerns must be presented directly to the board in its totality. I do not have the power nor the authority to represent the views or intentions as an individual. Thank you for respecting this request. Now, my first main thing is about the senior citizen center. I was a kind of a part of the acquisition of the part of the property owned Popular Street. I kind of helped and worked in conjunction with Mr. James Luke Thomas, making sure that, you know, everything went through. He did all the legwork, but, you know, somehow I was kind of pulled in because I knew the seller. So that's why I have a vested interest in this as well. One of the questions I have that I know you can't answer this time, but I need to pose the question. You all received a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to build this facility. And I know that I've been told that this plant was returned because you all wanted to build a facility a little bit bigger and it was going to take a little, close to one million or one point two billion dollars to build this facility that you wanted to build. My question on that is, and I hope that you all have the answer for it, is I hope that you're extremely sure that you're going to get the other money that you were hoping for, for the grant, because you know how grants go. So I was just really, really concerned about giving back the grant and not asking for an additional grant and applying for that. Also, with the building of this facility, I was also told that there were plans to demolish the basketball course at Hall Richardson and move them back and place them somewhere else. You know, in that area for Hall Richardson. My question is, are you going to tear those courts up prior to building a new basketball court? As we all know, our students, athletes, we have some A U teens, and they are providing some much-needed mentorship through basketball. And they utilize the Hall Richardson basketball courts to practice. I've been out there myself and seen them, and they're doing a great job with those kids. So if you tear that up, they don't have a place to go, because we don't have a county or community gym. Where would they be? Where would they go? What are we going to do about it? Are we going to pre-plan and make sure that they have those facilities as you continue to try to prepare for the senior citizen center? Or are we going to just say we're going to do this and let it finish for themselves? Saint John comes into this because the property line, and I emailed you all, just emailed you all, a copy of the plaque and the deed for both Hall Richardson Recreation Center as well as Saint John Holy Church. And as Michael Swin would say, when you step across that fence at Hall Richardson, you are on Saint John Holy Church land. I didn't want to come up here and just say that. I wanted to be able to show you that that is the case and that is true. Okay? Actually, he was partially wrong, because you step across on the third street, and then about five feet later, you're on Saint John's property. So in saying that, I don't know if we're planning on destroying and tearing up the softball field and putting the basketball courts there? Or are you going to be looking for an additional property? Now, my concern comes there because, like I said, I grew up going to Saint John Holy Church, and my mother sold a whole lot of potato pies, a whole lot of dinners, a lot of them did, to acquire, you know, help acquire the land and everything. Michael Swin did the leading as far as trying to acquire the additional property in hopes of maybe one day, they too would be able to build some type of facility where the community would be able to utilize it as well. And my request for this board of commissioners is that if you're planning to do anything and need some additional property, that you respect this church enough and their members who have worked so hard and diligently to acquire this property, that you have a conversation with them, that they don't hear in the street from somebody, or finally come around back door to them, that you want a, you know, part of this property, you want part of this land or whatever, that you give them that much, they deserve that much respect. And the other question is, and I'm asking these things because when you look on Facebook and you see all these questions coming up.
Was that her five-minute alarm?
That's my five-minute alarm.
Real quick.
I'm gonna wrap it up. If you see it come up on Facebook and people have all these questions, well, you need to go to the source. I can't answer it for them, okay? They can't answer it for themselves. Well, we need to go to the source, that entire board, and that's the reason why I came today.
Okay.
So that you all could, I could reach out to folks, let folks know also if this is going to be a county, if this is going to be a senior citizen center, or if this is going to be a quote-unquote "community center", because that is up in the air and nobody knows what's going on. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Renee? Ms. Renee? She's not here, okay. All right, next item, public meetings, we have none.
What about Lucille?
Which one did I?
Lucille Duncan?
Yeah, B.
B.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Ms. Duncan?
Mister.
Oh, I'm sorry, mister. Y'all got to keep me straight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sorry for the bundle here, just an introduction. Based on the fact of defamation of character and nothing less, we all hold sacred the amendments, the Bill of Rights, the Fifth Amendment, which states that every man is due justice every man is due to the right of property. I speak to county attorney, or I'm speaking to Mr. Bieber, Ms. Hannah, Mr. Droudi, congratulations, Mr. Gordon, Mr. McCrary, the chairman, Ms. Hickox, Mr. Hopkins, and Coach Thomas. My concern that I'm having is, as I have shared with Sheriff Mosley, is the deviance of criminal activity along Rainier Road. I've also reached out to different agencies in regards of criminal trespass upon the property, whereas an intruder has made himself so comfortable that he enters into our property, changes locks, puts security doors on it, and for some strange reason, even will take a drink or go through the cabinet or what have you, check the address. Deputies are called out, sure enough, and they say that to save on paper, they have resulted to CADD reports. However, when you mention Jacob Matthew Spell and possibly Ashley Thornton Spell across the street, as well as now the new move-in of Vivian Madry with all of her PMOs. I don't birdwatch other neighbors, nor am I suffering from any type of condition or paranoia. However, when you have a full glass of lemonade in the refrigerator and you come home from Brunswick and a full glass of lemonade is drunk and with the glass sitting on the bar, that leaves a subject that entry was made, even in reference to a case of nineteen seventeen when a Negro woman stated that the courts proved that without the evidence or the criminal evidence, that some intruder was making entry of the household without the evidence to become substantiated of crime itself or the offense. In such cases, the deviants have even played the Rainier Road or the Dollar General Rainier Road location, which it has been addressed corporate as well, from shoplifting to the lessening of food quality to managers running individuals out of the store based on their fact that the individuals are shocked. And the racial bias is somewhat a bedding the crime, meaning that I've been told, well, Jacob Matthew Spell, his dad is a military, we'll talk to him at the jail, or Tammy Thornton is the friend of Ashley Thornton. That can't hold, that's in this body of crime. If a person is shoplifting or if a person is doing this, don't say it until your uncle bolt, because if another person comes in and does the same thing, then you have like ten dollars taken out of the store, and that's ten dollars out of the taxpayers' pocket that we can't afford to have. However, the intrusion of the property or the criminal activity, as I've been told, of Mel's Trailer Park, of Community Circle, or Oak Ridge Road, the type of poverty is lessening or, how can I say it, are grueling. The type of depreciation of property that taking away from passive acres, taking away from just homeowners in general. And it's not a laughing matter, as Alfred Kendricks would take for consider on his off-duty. I informed him of the matter, which I've come to find out that he deputized, but at the same time, going over to his trailer and saying, hey, man, we got deviants, we got dis, there's an eighteen V parade up and down the road. And he said, well, I do understand that, and however, and do nothing, all you have to do is call them out. And that is the other concern that I'm having. In reference to, if you was to call a question out, such as a deputy Chris Manning, or like, see, what bias do a Lucille Duncan have? I graduated and I agree.
That's your five minutes. Thank you. Is Ms. Renee here? Okay. Next item, public meetings, we have none, consent agenda, none. Old business, considering approved bid for concessions tabled from October the second. No bids. Okay? So Commissioner Gordon had an idea. Some of these things that we're putting out for bid are just put on our website. And Commissioner Gordon was bringing up, maybe we need to utilize, whether it's the radio or the newspaper, some of these other avenues. Would y'all entertain that motion that we put it back out for bid and utilize some of these?
I like the radio.
I mean, is there an agency or something that you could list them with? I mean, I don't, I'm just thinking out loud, general terms. I know that, you know, it's dealing with the county and I understand that, you know, we can't afford to pay them. I'm just saying, is there any kind of general thing that we could list them in one of these organizations that reaches millions of people? Or, you know, because a lot of people, out of state, that might want to buy some of this stuff. I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud.
Right.
But I agree with you. I agree with Mike. Whatever we could do to get it out. I think it's a lack of community, people are not seeing it.
Madam Clerk, can you handle that? Thank y'all for coming.
Appreciate it.
Madam Clerk, or Ms. Droudi, can you?
We can do that. And that's, so one of the things I think that, because Commissioner Gordon had mentioned it to me earlier, and I thought it was a great idea as well, is that, especially when it comes to property, and Commissioner Hickox, you might come way in here. I'm guessing probably one of the best ways to do it with the property is if we actually went with a broker or something to list it on MLS. Is that, did I say that right?
Yeah.
The words to get it out, but that's just. Well, but right. Right, but I think we're, but the idea talking about the gamut of issues that we have and we're trying to get information out to the public in reference to something like the concession bids. I think what we, what Commissioner Gordon had talked about and what he probably started to try to start doing is getting with the newspaper and the radio and at least putting some type of advertisement out there saying, hey, Wayne County is accepting bids, go to their website, blah, blah. Does that make sense versus now we just pretty much put it on our website? And if you see it or hear about it, or? Right.
I know, they have where sellers can sell their own. And I mean, it reaches millions, I mean, this has got all kinds of views.
Like Zillow or something?
Yeah. So as us Wayne County being the sellers, does that make sense? So we don't have to have a broker's license or go through a broker to list on some of these advertisements? So I mean, that might be something we would like to entertain. I can help look up some of that stuff, because when I was listing my house in Alabama, I went through a lot of those different. I can help look up some of that stuff, because when I was listing my house in Alabama, I went through a lot of those different sites, and I didn't have to have a broker to do it, just as a landlord.
Hire a broker. There's so much liability, hire a broker.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
And, and right now, and that, right now, we're just talking about concessions, and I think this is...
Right, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to drag it all in, but I know one of the things Commissioner Gordon and I talked about this morning.
Right.
A- and we just, we kind of bled off into not only, you know, the, the land stuff, but...
Animal control officer.
Yeah, well, we're putting out these bids for, you know, whether it be building projects or whatever, just trying to get the, the largest bang for our buck, or the widest audience anyway.
That's right.
Okay, so I, I, I make a motion that we repost this concession bid, and, um, that we try to use other avenues to get that information out. And I, I guess it won't be tabled because we're changing the aspects of it, but we'll try to put it on, uh, the agenda for next month.
December, yes, sir.
Mm-hmm. Can I get a second?
One second.
Madam Clerk, any co- any more comments, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Hickox?
Yes.
Commissioner Gordon?
Yes.
Commissioner McCrery?
Yes.
Under new business, consider and approve well site agreement for fire station located at Tank Road and Chapman Plantation Road. Um, I think everybody had a chance to look at this agreement, and this is a well that I, I don't know if one of y'all wants to explain it, I know a little bit about it, but we will not, we're, we're not physically having to put this down, we're being able to utilize community water, and, uh, at the assurance that it will be there, and saving the county taxpayers money in the, in the long run.
That's about it, if, if anybody has any questions, um, Brandon's here, and he probably can help us more. I put him on the spot, but no, seriously, I think Brandon has worked with the folks, with the community well, the water system, and, um, and that's basically what it is, is that they're, they're needing a site, and correct me when I'm wrong here, Mr. Brandon, but they're needing a site for a well, and we have the perfect site. So basically what we're gonna do is, is enter into a lease agreement with them, where they're gonna provide our fire station with free water, and they're gonna put down the well at no cost to us. Yes, exactly, yeah, yeah.
I make a motion that we accept this agreement.
Second.
Any more comments? How about a hurrah? We don't have to put the well down. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Hickox?
Yes.
Commissioner Gordon?
Yes.
Commissioner McCrery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Next item is to consider and approve the solar ordinance. Mr. Droudy, or Mr. Bieber, would one of y'all like to elaborate? I know we do not currently have any solar ordinance, same as the next line item that we have, and I think we are remiss not to install something to protect the citizens of Wayne County. As Ms. Daniel said, I, I've lived here all my life, and I want to make sure that my family and my kids, which, my grandkids, I have two of them, and they can all live here safely, and I think this is part of the initial implementation of an ordinance that's gonna assure that safety for them years down the road. We don't know a lot about solar panels and the lifespan of them, and whether it's the refurbishing of them, or recycling of them, and I think this ordinance is gonna help us assure that the companies that are bringing these in, if they're willing to, they'll come in under our ordinance, and we will be able to monitor them better with us having an ordinance, and they can't just come in and do what they want and leave when they get ready to leave.
Chairman, I, I, uh, make a motion that we adopt this ordinance.
Second.
Any more comments? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Hickox?
Yes.
Commissioner Gordon?
Yes.
Commissioner McCrery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
All right, next item's consider and approve the noise ordinance. We have had a lot of concerns about the, uh, the noise ordinances, um, and we spoke about it briefly, or in detail, however you want to look at, um, Mr. Sheriff, uh, I know currently all we have is state regulations, correct? And you, you were saying that those are harder for y'all, for the officers to implement, and we really don't have a noise ordinance for the county.
Well, and, and the time zone, the state laws are a little bit less, less prohibited than these, but this will make it where the money they do actually have, they can use officer discretion, you know, we, we won't, we won't be going out and writing somebody an ordinance violation the first time out, we'll, we'll still warn them, but this will make it where that we can react a little quicker. Right now, we depend on using the disorderly house. If they, if they're making too much racket, um, go in and warn them, and then go back and warn them, and you have to doc- document all that before you can write them a citation for disorderly house. But with these ordinances, we can react a little quicker, and then they'll still have the opportunity to go before the magistrate, whenever they, if they do go to court, if they get a citation, an ordinance violation. I think these will be good, I, I, I wouldn't want anything where the officer's discretion would be done away with. We'll look at circumstances in all of them, but there's instances where people are calling complaining about dogs, it's hard to shut up a dog. But, on the other hand, people setting off ten o'clock at night and disturbing a handicapped child, there doesn't need to be a lot of warnings with that, and any, anybody knows, and especially, um, you know, the, a lot of the neighbors don't discuss the problems with the neighbors because they're, they're worried about some kind of, of physical altercation, so they call law enforcement. But, but this will give my deputies the discretion to act the way that they should, and I, and I trust their decision-making.
One, one thing, I think Ms. Amy left, didn't she?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, one thing I would ask is that this is a preliminary ordinance, um, we're not perfect. I, I would like some feedback from y'all as you go through it, if you see something that needs to be amended or anything like that, I'm sure we would be willing to amend it wherever we need to, to make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck out of the noise ordinance, and y'all can do your job properly.
I put out a, um, I use, utilize my social media often, and I put out both of these proposed ordinances, um, to my constituents, I've sent it out to a lot of people, got a lot of feedback back on, on most of it. The big concerns is the noise ordinance, I think it would be, it would be beneficial to the county if we utilized our social media to say, hey, this is what this noise ordinance is for. This is, um, because the questions I got were, how does it affect the boat, boat races? How does it affect farmers who fire up a tractor too early? How does it affect, um, dove shoots? How does it affect loud music at the lake? Um, dogs running, all, a lot of things. So if we can put out information to begin with, because I even had one person write me that said, oh, praise the Lord, let me know the minute this goes to effect, and I assume I just call the sheriff and they'll come out immediately. I'm thinking, ooh, maybe, maybe a little disappointment there, but if we put some stuff out there to, to kind of let us know where the boundaries are and what the intent is, I think it will be much easier going forward.
You thought about me with that dove shoot, did you?
No, somebody else did.
Well, and that's why I ask, I think if, if the sheriff and Ms. Amy, through listening to nine-one-one calls, I think we can amend it and make sure, you know, it'll take us a little while to get it correct, but I think...
Well, and that, that's where officer discretion is the wonderful thing, if it's dove season, and they're not violating the law by shooting does, I sure do hate it, get you, get your house in town. I, I agree with Commissioner Hickox, I, uh, I've talked to Paul twice about this, I've talked to you today, and I also talked to you about it. My concern is, people misuse this, and the concerns that Jamie's brought up is concerns that, I mean, that's, that's part of living in the country. And I wouldn't want this to be used just because somebody's vindictive.
Right.
So, I think it's got, needs to be balanced.
Thank you for your homework in getting it out there, because, I mean, that's what we need, is for the citizens, I...
How's it gonna affect industry?
Right, well, and we did change one of them, I don't know if you got that, but we did change one of them to where if they had ten or more employees, um, and they were conducting normal business, um, that it would not affect them. But like I say, I, I, I think it's a good starting point, it may be a little too strict, but with the guy that's from the sheriff and Ms. Amy at E nine-one-one, um, I think we will be able to get it, and, and the officer's discretion, um, and, and be able to. So I make a motion that we pass this, uh, noise ordinance.
Second.
Any more comments?
So if anybody wants the amendment, I'll send it out the same way that I sent out the, the rest of the ordinances.
Drew, do you need a copy of that, and Bob? Okay. All right, we'll make sure we get you all, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Gordon?
Yes.
Commissioner McCrery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Hickox?
Yes.
Next item is, uh, purchase of sheriff's vehicles, this is one that we talked about during the, uh, work session. Just in case y'all wonder how many papers we're looking for, here's another stack, yeah, so just bear with us, I'm sorry. Um, sheriff's vehicles, we had, uh, do you want to go through this, or do you want me to go through it, or do you remember? Paul would...
Well, this is, yeah, I'm sorry, this is the PowerPoint that I put together for our work session when we did, when we did it. And basically what it represents is, um, you know, the sheriff has struggled for a couple of years now trying to find new vehicles, and, and they had them on order with, with, uh, local, well, Woody Folsom, and, um, I think after about, I don't know, twelve, eighteen months, they finally got the orders fixing to start producing them. Um, we also had the opportunity to get with Enterprise Rental Company, the sheriff and I were originally meeting with him in looking at possibly in the future doing a lease, but the sheriff has kind of put a hold on that till we see what happens with Splos Five. Well, in the meantime, the sheriff and I talked and said, hey, let's see if he can just find us some vehicles to purchase. So that's what we've done, so basically that represents eight trucks, uh, four from Woody, and then four from Enterprise, and then the four Tahos that we had talked about previously, and we mentioned in the work session as well, um, in reference to replacing the detectives, um, they're currently in the Explorers, if I'm not mistaken, Sheriff, and, and, go ahead.
And then, and these four Tahos will be able to be, um, designated to the detectives, and the, the, the Explorers that they have can actually be suited for patrol vehicles. These purchases of these vehicles make it where the oldest vehicle that we have on the road will be in two thousand and seventeen. There'll be one two thousand and seventeen left on the road. This will get rid of a bunch of older vehicles, and the vehicles that will be taken out of service will actually be able to be sold, and the funds from them will go back to the general fund. I, I know this is expensive, and, and all that y'all have done for me since I've been in office, I greatly appreciate, y'all don't know how much. But these will get us where our vehicles, we'll, we'll have a new vehicles, we'll be able to get rid of the older ones. These, these purchases will save astronomically on maintenance fees. I'm telling you, we replace motors, transmissions, all kind of things in these old vehicles, and there's some of them that are in bad shape now, that, that needs work. But, but these purchases will get us where we'll be, we'll be set good for vehicles for a while. And, and, um, we're still, we're still discussing the, the lease problem with Enterprise. Um, we, we looked at the, the expense of that, and the newer the vehicles we have, whenever we, if we do decide to go with that, the better we'll be suited for that also, as far as recouping monies whenever vehicles were taken off the road. Included in, in this amount, we actually figured the price of the vehicles, the cost of the equipment to go in these vehicles, because the sad thing is, some of them we can use the, the, the equipment from the trucks we have now, but whenever they change year models, they, they'll change, and we, there's some items we'll have to buy. The prices that we have here will actually help transition us from the watch guard in-car cameras. If y'all remember the discussions, we had, we had, uh, we're gonna have to buy a forty-three thousand dollar server just to keep the watch guard cameras, and their cameras are so much more expensive compared to what we're trying to transition to now. We're actually going to customs in-car and, and body cameras, and, uh, we'll be able to keep the storage in our office at the, at the price of, I think it was six thousand dollars, to make it where our servers that we've got bought would work. So we're gonna be saving a bunch of money with that, but the thing is, the watch guard cameras we have, we're having to pay a hundred and ninety-five dollars license fee per year, per unit. If we get rid of those, the license fee for the customs is sixty dollars a year. So, we'll be saving money there, but this, this purchase will help us get rid of those watch guard cameras and set us more on the path to get away from them completely. If, if we get the vehicles and the ten in-car cameras, y'all take your breath, it's a man. It'd be six hundred and two thousand dollars for ten cameras and the twelve vehicles. If we go with fifteen cameras, it'd be six twenty-eight, oh ninety-three.
And, and those extra five cameras?
Yes.
But they...
That'll be fifteen in-car cameras to replace all the watch guard. And, and this, this number of cameras will, will just about completely replace the patrol vehicles. I think we'll still have, uh, seven or eight.
The fifteen will?
Yes.
Okay. And how about the five-year rotation, this gets us caught up on the five-year rotation?
Yes, this, this will help us dramatically. The Tahos are actually used vehicles, but, but the place where we've been buying these, they, they do a real good job going through them, and, and we, we've had issues with one of them that we got with the air conditioning, but no other issues at all.
Are, are they from Enterprise also? Where are the Tahos from?
They, they actually come out of Chicago, whether or not, there is something good coming out of Chicago.
I think he's talking about this one, is it from Enterprise or Woody, those Tahos, or neither one?
No, no, they're from, they're from...
Oh, from somewhere else.
And they're used, but, I mean, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars for four Tahos, that's a deal.
See, and they're, and they're, and they're actually, they actually have a lot of the equipment in them, we'll just have to put a, a video in the motor.
So with these four, with these four coming from, these four Tahos, do we get maintenance records and all that kind of stuff that comes with them?
Uh, we don't get a maintenance record, but, but they...
Is, do we have somebody that goes through them before we say I do?
Well, this company, the CMI, the company we buy them from.
Okay, and the ones that we've got so far, only thing we've had is air conditioning, nothing with motors, transmission. I'm very familiar with how many motors and transmissions y'all paid to change. Duncan does a lot of them for us, there's a lot of, and it takes two or three months sometimes to get them done. Commissioner Hopkins, if I can add on to that, and, and what, exactly what you're talking about, is when the sheriff and I were talking to Enterprise, they basically have a software system that they'll stick all your vehicle information in, and they can kind of compare you to national averages and stuff like that. And I think we're spending close to about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty-five thousand a year just on maintenance with the sheriff's department. And now, we can't guarantee what the savings will be, but, but his, the Enterprise guy was like, yeah, you'll, you'll cut that more than in half. So, with, with having newer vehicles obviously on the road.
With this total, if I don't, if you don't mind, Chairman, so, I mean, are, it, it, are we saying that we're ready to buy these right now? If we approve this, or we just saying that we need to budget this money, and as they come available, we would buy them?
No, it's...
No, it's-
We, we have the four trucks coming from Woody Folsom, and Enterprise has, has kinda placed a hold on the four that they would give.
But Commissioner, to answer that question, this is Splos money.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so in other words, this is money that, that, that Splos four has already been designated to public safety, and we have, I think our last count was right at a million dollars in public safety. So you're looking at six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. That, you know, leaves us with a nice ballot still in public safety that needs to be spent, obviously, because the taxpayers give us to do just that, is to spend that money, so.
And you're gonna put the stickers on them that say paid for by the penny? Yep, that's right. How about bicycles? I don't see no bicycles over here. Can we go to bicycles?
Hey, you, you won't see this fat boy here.
All right, so the extra five will get us caught up, and we, with the cameras, um, instead of getting the ten, we'll get the fifteen. I, I make a motion that we approve the, uh, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand ninety-three dollars.
Second.
Second.
Third.
Any more comments? Pick, take your pick on that, Madam Clerk.
All right.
Commissioner Gordon was first.
Yep. Are you ready for me to call?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner McCrery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Hickox?
Yes.
Commissioner Gordon?
Yes.
Y'all give me a week, in two days, I've got a ambulance you can buy at a D.
I wish you'd moved that thing. Somebody asked me, said, what, what y'all doing buying used ambulances? They said, that's a piece of junk. Yeah, I told him, I said, that's the sheriff's ambulance, so, well, you better not be messing with that thing. All right, next item is the air packs, uh, the considering approved purchase of the air packs. And we discussed this in the work session, the price of a new air pack, uh, Scott air pack, and these are for the firefighters. Um, the, a new one is eight thousand one hundred and ten dollars, and I think, is it Richard found these?
Yes.
Yes, and, and found a lot, a whole lot of them, and there's thirty-one of them, and they're gonna give them to us for a thousand dollars a piece versus buying new ones that are eight thousand. And we did ask the question, could these be refurbished? Because some of the air packs cannot, and he said, yes, these, the valves can be taken out and they can be refurbished.
Hey, Commissioner, if you don't, or Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I, I apologize to all of y'all. Um, I literally just remembered this as I'm sitting here looking at this agenda item. But Richard sent me an email late Friday saying that he had talked to Garden City again, and they said they would give them to us for thirty thousand. I apologize, I should've-
Don't apologize for that.
Well, I know, but I should've told y'all that beforehand, and I honestly just remembered it. I apologize, I'm sorry.
So they're gonna give us one for free?
Yeah.
Also, you know, me and you were talking about this, about getting, getting the same brand name, because the brand name that we've got now, some of, some of it's this brand, this brand, and the older brand names, they're getting harder and harder for them to get the maintenance on them, so they really can't even use them sometimes. So I think this is a great deal.
And, and these will inter, I'm sorry, these will interchange with the cities? And the way they were describing it to us is, if, if you're in a fire and you're having to utilize a respiration system, the valves are on different sides. If we get all the same, they're the same. When you go in there, you have no question as to whether the valve is on the left side or the right side. And I think not only for safety of our volunteers and our regular firemen from the city, but I, I think it'll be best for everybody, because we will have, actually have interchangeable tanks with all the fire department, whether it's volunteer or the, uh, city's fire department.
You said, I was gonna say that with this, have some consistency and safety, because they're all the same. You, you can be in the middle of a fire, and you've got a different, I mean, different, uh, valve turn. That may, may cause you to have injuries, that may cost your life.
That's right, that's right.
So I'll make a motion that we, uh, we purchase the thirty thousand from Garden City.
Sir.
Any more comments? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Hickox?
Yes.
Commissioner Gordon?
Yes.
Commissioner McCrery?
Yes. Is, is that Splos money, or is that coming out of general fund?
Splos money.
Okay, all right, good. All right, next item, the, uh, parcels. Mr. Bieber, I think you have this information. The first one is sixty-seven B dash seventy-seven. And this is, we're considering approved sale of the map and parcel number sixty-seven B dash seventy-seven.
So that was one that y'all had requested the, perhaps the bid with the minimum amount. I think y'all had voted for this one in September, just to give us some extra runtime. I don't believe we got any bids the last time. Again, this time, no bids were received, the minimum bid was five thousand dollars. And just to give y'all kind of a brief summary, this is, is the address of two twenty-two Willow Road. Based on our tax assessor's records, there's point eleven acres attached with this plaque, so.
How many, how much?
Point eleven, less than a quarter of an acre. I'm not sure if y'all want to think about redoing that one out now or in the future, or?
I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Hickox. Say that again.
He, um, the chairman asked me if, could a broker sell this particular piece of property? And I, you know, this is a tiny little piece of property. My strongest suggestion is that the commission, um, hire a broker and put all their properties through them. Because right now, because there's one parcel land in here that's actually a desirable, um, lot, in a very desirable neighborhood. There are several real estate companies inside Wayne County that are not connected to the government who do very wonderful business, and they would do, they would do justice by the, um, commission. That would be my strongest recommendation. To take all of these that we're gonna sell, just turn them over to a broker. Some of them aren't worth much, some of them are worth something.
Even if we set a minimum bid, they would still maybe be able to work with them?
Well, what they would, what they would do is give you a market analysis on this piece of property, and they would send you a listing agreement on this one, we suggest this. And then you're not stuck at a minimum. If, if you have to take it down, then you take it down. They may know something you don't know. That's why they're, you know, they're experts in their field.
Jamie, what kind of percentage would they, what's the normal going rate, so we would know what kind of percentage?
There's not a normal going rate, they would negotiate it, but if you're doing multiple properties, I mean, really, this is more of a, um, being a good citizen of Wayne County, they're not gonna make any money off of this. But they're taxpayers of Wayne County. To get something back on the digest, and, you know, and, you know, I'm, they would do it as a, a service. If, they wouldn't do it for free, but I'm not saying they were gonna charge the normal, you know, the, the going rate. I, yeah, I don't know, you'd have to negotiate with them.
Let me-
It's not a standard, it fluctuates, somewhere between five and seven is where most properties land.
It's changed since I was in the real estate.
Let me ask you this, if you don't mind, just for myself and the Madam Clerk. Um, so how, because typically something like this, y'all would require us to possibly, you know, get three bids from brokers? But I, and that's, so that's what I'm asking you, Jamie, is how do you-
I would not suggest that at all, because it's too much work on their end. I'm suggesting contract with a real estate company.
Okay.
And these things that are, because some of them, some of these properties, we need to get out and we need to get back on the, the tax rolls. We, we just, if you need a list, I'll be, I would suggest three brokers. You go interview three brokers that aren't connected with government, and just have the conversation. They will give you all the information, and we will be much better off in the long run.
Yes.
Now, there's certain things that they'll have to do, because it's still government property, that's a little bit different than just private sales. Like, I'm, I'm sure Commissioner Hickox is used to private sales, they'll still have to do some things a little bit differently, because this code section, it had, it did change about three years ago, allow us to finally hire brokers to do this sort of thing. But they will have to do some things, so it's probably worth the conversation in the interview to make sure that they can comply with all the requirements, so we'll have that one too.
The benefit for the commission is this stuff gets advertised.
Yeah.
Right, to a bigger audience than what it is now. Okay, so we'll continue going through these. We got no bids on that first one.
No bids on sixty-seven B dash seventy-seven, got no bids on one hundred B dash thirteen dash two. The minimum bid that y'all had set on that was nine thousand dollars. On item H, Mr. Chairman, you just want me to keep going through?
Yes, please.
Um, on item H, mapping parcel ninety-nine dash seventy dash four, there was one bid received. It was from Walt Wright Properties, Mr. James Walker. His bid was twenty-four thousand thirty dollars. He did have the required earnest money in there, um, to go along with the bid. Um, so that could be for y'all's approval. On mapping parcel J six dash thirty-three, um, did receive one bid from Mr. Olen Houston. That's O-L-E-N Houston, um, in the amount of one thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. I believe the minimum bid on that was one thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars and seventeen cents. And again, he did have the required earnest money in there with that one as well. On item J, one oh three, mapping parcel one oh three dash seventeen dash two, uh, Mr. James Walker, again, I believe it's with Walt Wright Properties, uh, did place a bid on there. The minimum bid was eighteen thousand dollars. We got a bid in the amount of eighteen thousand and ten dollars, and he had the required earnest money, um, included with that bid in there as well. And then finally, item K, mapping parcel J eight dash sixty-five, y'all had set the minimum bid for ten thousand dollars. We did not receive any bids on that parcel though.
Okay. Do we wanna do these one at a time, or do them all at one time, the ones that we did receive bids?
What was the minimum bid on H?
On H?
Yeah.
It was twenty-four thousand and twenty-four dollars was the minimum bid, and we received a bid in the amount of twenty-four thousand and thirty dollars.
Right. We'll take it?
Yeah.
So I, I make a motion that we approve that bid of twenty-four thousand thirty dollars on mapping parcel number ninety-nine dash seventy dash four. Any comments? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Hickox?
Yes.
Commissioner Gordon?
Yes.
Commissioner McCrery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
All right, um, mapping parcel number J six dash thirty-three for thirteen hundred and ninety dollars. Is that Mr. Olen?
Olen.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I make a motion that we approve that bid.
I second it.
Madam Clerk, or any comments? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Gordon?
Yes.
Commissioner McCrery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Hickox?
Yes.
Next item, um, mapping parcel number one hundred and three dash seventeen dash two, again by Mr. Walker, eighteen thousand ten dollars. I make a motion that we accept that bid.
Second.
Any comments? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner McCrery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Hickox?
Yes.
Commissioner Gordon?
Yes.
Okay, and do we need to make a motion that we put these others through a broker? Or some other avenue of selling these? Madam Clerk?
Can we just give instruction to?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I would suggest that we allow a county administrator to, um, talk to the brokers or whoever, and sort of come back with what he feels is-
A recommendation?
Yeah, a recommendation.
Okay.
I'm good with that. I'll probably get with Commissioner Hickox, if that's fine with her.
Do we need that as a motion, or can we just nod?
I would-
I mean, we're doing it as a recommendation on y'all's behalf, so we'll just bring it back to y'all for actual approval.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, Al, consider an approved memorandum of, uh, or agreement with DOT in reference to Oglethorpe Road at Little Goose Creek Bridge. Uh, that's money just for right away?
Pretty much, uh, is the county's portion for them to do the bridge. And we are at a tier one, which is actually gonna be, I think our half is fifty thousand dollars.
Instead of the seventy-five, okay.
That's tier, right?
Um, yes, sorry, I had to think about it, yes.
And this is fifty thousand dollars for a brand-new bridge at Goose Creek?
Can't beat that.
Yes.
And this is the one by the auto-haul Baptist church, so there'll be another one on the other end of Oglethorpe later.
Right, next to, um, yes, Osteen Branch, okay, and that's the one that has the damage on it, isn't it?
That's correct. By the way, just for information on that, uh, as the DOT is, the bridge is expected to come out, and it's state that. It said structurally that didn't affect the load carrying ability of that bridge. And, uh, so based on that, we decided since the bridge was coming forward, I got the recommends spending any money.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve this, uh-
I'll make that motion.
Do I need to clarify that?
Well, let me, just to be on the safe side, Mr. Purcell, am I wrong? Was there two of these MOAs, or just one?
Uh, we got the revised one this morning, uh, showing the fifty thousand dollar pay in seventy-five. They reevaluated what tier it was, and it's tier one, not tier two.
Right, so it was just the one MOA then?
Just the one.
The other one will be later?
Okay, and that was my only concern before we moved forward, because I was, for some reason, I had in my head that there were two of them, but the other one's for later, okay. I got you. Yes.
Dr. Call, we're not closing down both ends of the road, that's pretty much it.
That's right.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Well, I had a motion by Commissioner Gordon, who's second?
Coach Thomas?
Okay.
Who was I?
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Hickox?
Yes.
Commissioner Gordon?
Yes.
Commissioner McCrery?
Yes. Uh, next item, consider an approved resolution calling for a referendum on Splos five. We all got a copy of that. Thank you, Commissioner Hickox, for some of the changes that you had in there for clarification for what will be printed on that resolution, so that it'll be more, um, clearer to the voters when they go to actually vote on it, and they'll know a little bit more about what they're voting on.
It does include a, um, under recreation, it does include a competition swimming pool, a community center, and, and a quest dream center.
And we can get y'all a copy of these if you need them.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Sir?
So move.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any more comments? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Hickox?
Yes.
Commissioner Gordon?
Yes.
Commissioner McCrery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
All right, item N that we amended the agenda to add the MOU for EAM.
EAM, we, EAM got an abatement when their, the project was supposed to be sixty-five million dollars. They ended up spending ninety-eight million dollars, and so we need to adjust the abatement for the other thirty-two million dollars.
The remaining four years.
Yes, yeah. I, I don't know. It says five years, but I would think that since we're just adding to it-
The thirty-three million.
Right, the thirty-three million, that's what I believe, I'm not-
They're already used one year, right?
That's right, it's already one year in.
One year in.
I think that's correct. If not, we may have to-
That's the way I read it.
Okay.
I was at the IDA meeting when this was passed, and you are absolutely correct, this would be four years-
Yes, right.
Coming in one year after the initial-
Okay, perfect. Drew said that, so mark that down. Yeah, um, and, and I think is, in good faith for the county, um, thi- this doesn't affect anything but county taxes for the abatement, but in, in us, in good faith trying to be able to get other industries and things like that to come in here, I think we are, uh, we, we need to allow this, because this is growth, what, what'd you say, seventy-seven jobs?
Seventy-seven.
Yeah, so we're adding more jobs, we're adding more tax base, um, and it's just because they're expanding. Commissioner Hickox said it maybe because of him- Commissioner Hickox said it may be because of inflation, it may be part of that, I don't know. Um, but they are, they're, they're willing to invest in Wayne County ninety-eight million dollars and I, I think that's a, that, that's very good that they're willing to expand and, um, they, they like Wayne County enough that they'll be able to, uh, put that money here instead of some other locations that they may have. So I make a motion, go ahead.
I, I second it, but because of the diligence of the Industrial Authority and, and, and getting those industries to reinvest in Wayne County, uh, not only that, but, uh, uh, Healthy Pet and a lot, a lot of other reinvested. We're talking about over two hundred million and probably over two hundred jobs. That's the reason the Dodgers went up because of them, so, you know, they're well worth it and they're, they're doing what they're supposed to do.
Right, that's exactly right. So I make a motion that we approve this, uh, memo- memorandum of understanding for EAM to increase it to, uh, ninety-eight million dollars for their abatement. And we already have a second. Any more comments, concerns? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Hickox?
Yes.
Commissioner Gordon?
Yes.
Commissioner McCrery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Appointments, Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act Board, Dr. Paul Scott. Term expired October the first, twenty twenty-three. And, uh, he, I think he is not going to continue and it must be a retired educator. I did reach out to somebody, I, I, I have not heard back. Um, didn't know if anybody has somebody they want to appoint to this board or do you want me to wait on that phone call or what?
Yeah, let's, let's see if we can get some money done.
Okay.
And I didn't reach out to anybody because I know you were going to.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I have not heard back, but as soon as I do, I'll let you know yes or no and then we can go from there, so. I, I make.
You in mind if they don't.
I make a motion that we table this until our next meeting. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Gordon?
Yes.
Commissioner McCrery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Hickox?
Yes.
Items with the county administrator, we have none.
I've got two. And I'll make them kind of quick. As, as all the commissioners know, um, we, we depend on and do a lot of work with the Heart of Georgia Autumn Hall Regional Commission. And, um, just recently, their executive committee, um, uh, made a brilliant decision, brilliant decision. They have recommended to the regional commission board, um, a list of officers for twenty-three and twenty-four years. Um, they've, they've recommended as their secretary, Isaiah Stevens, and as their second vice chair, Jimmy Rogers, and as the vice chair, Bernie Weaver. But the best decision they made, the best decision that is a benefit to Wayne County is they recommended James Booth Thomas be the chairman again. And so he has been elected as chairman again and, and I just, look, that benefits us. The clerk and I have already been on the phone with, you know, Department of Community Affairs and folks like that and, and they've already said, well, isn't Chairman Thomas part of y'all's board? We're like, yes, he is, yes, he is. So that, that carries some weight with it, we really appreciate it and congratulations, Mr. Thomas, very much. Well deserved.
Uh, I can tell you that it's already in the works, Drew, I didn't say this. As chairman of this commission and one of the longest-serving Trump's commission, that grant we sent back and the one we planned for the million dollars is already in the works.
Amen.
That's exactly right. Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Um, the sl- second and last thing I have is this. Um, the University of Georgia Carl Vincent Institute of Government has recognized two of our county commissioners as being certified county commissioners. And let me say this as a former GSBA school board member. These county commissioners flat shore put in some work to get certified. And unless things have changed, when I was on the school board, we just went to a couple of conferences and that was it. But, but I know, um, Commissioner Jamie Hickox and Commissioner Mike Gordon, they've sent our certifications and, and I have personally witnessed the amount of time, it, it, but even before I got here, they were already working on it. But the amount of time these two and of course all the other commissioners too have done to, to be recognized as a certified county commissioner and, and let me just say that it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work out of their personal time and I want to personally thank y'all for taking the time and getting that information because, because in meetings with them one-on-one, I've had them go, I was in a class and this is what they said, boss. That's good, so Commissioner Hickox, this is a beautiful class as well.
Drew gonna take your picture?
Okay, yes, yes.
Y'all go down.
Mike, come on down and we'll do yours next, if that's okay.
I'll be with you when you get down there. I'm running over Andy.
Congratulations. Which, which one you best out there?
Yes.
We're going to have to count the key chains on.
Congratulations.
Jordan? Thank y'all, once again, very well deserved. And Mr. Chairman, I saw.
Mr. Chairman, I can tell you that ACCG goes to the University of Georgia Carl Vincent Center and taking those classes is just as, just as rigid as if you were a University of Georgia student.
Yeah.
And they are real stringent. If you miss a class, they will give you credit. So that, that is a great opportunity and I commend them for doing that. Also, they're still going to be after you because you got advanced degrees and, uh, uh, which is, it gives you more knowledge and, and, and it, it, it weighs a lot when you, with other commissioners because you know what you're doing. And it look good on your wall.
All right, thank you. Congratulations, y'all. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Quick balances for September twenty twenty-three budget report compared to September twenty twenty-two. Revenues for twenty-three were one million, two hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and one dollars and twenty-eight cents. Twenty twenty-two revenues, one million, two hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and four cents. Overall revenues are up from twenty twenty-two by one point seventy-five percent. Expenses for twenty-three, three million, one hundred and fourteen thousand, eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. Twenty twenty-two, two million, two hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. Overall expenses are up from twenty twenty-two by thirty-five point eighty-two percent. But let me remind y'all also, part of that is the ARP money that is transferred into our general fund. So that pays a, plays a effect on that being, the revenues being, or the expenses being up. The fund balances as of October the thirty-first, twenty-three, general fund, one million, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-four cents. Lost treasury account, nine million, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. Splot four, six million, six hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-six cents. T Splot, three million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-six cents. American Rescue Plan, four million, one hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-seven cent. And revolving loan fund, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. That's all.
That's it?
All right, items with commissioners, Commissioner Thomas?
Um, I promise y'all it's going to be good. It's going to be good.
Thank you. It'll all come out in the wash.
That's what my granddaddy say, if it come out the wash, come out the rinse.
You good?
I'm good.
You're not going to say nothing? All right. Hurry up, Commissioner Hopkins, your turn.
Congratulations, everybody, on getting, uh, certified. I really want to congratulate our county administrator, he's doing outstanding job.
Amen.
And, and, uh, uh, no, this is not anything to write or, no point in it, you know. At least mine, I thought it was, anyway.
Well, man, that head swelled.
Uh, it's, it's, you know, it's coming. He'll bring that rose with a hammer right behind it. I just want to say I've had several, uh, constituents asking me about paving roads and, and if they're on the list and all of that. I have the list right here and I would be happy to talk to anybody afterwards if there's any of you here. I know we have one constituent that was asking me, so I would be happy to, uh, go over the list with you and give you an explanation on where we're at. Other than that, congratulations to my, uh, constituents on their awards. I sort of feel like a stepchild, I hadn't gone through all mine.
Got to tighten up.
I gotta tighten up.
Commissioner Hickox?
Um, I want to address what this commission has been through in the last thirty or forty-five days. We have, uh, um, it's been, uh, um, well covered on our media. It has, uh, been really hashed out on social media and it has been very, very tough to sit on, on this side instead of on the camera side. Um, what I will say is if you ever watch C-SPAN, um, you watch the national government do the things that the national government does and sometimes they get heated and they get contentious and they are passionate about their positions. For me, I ran to do the next right thing. And thirty to forty-five, last thirty to forty-five days, it has been very, very hard to, to keep the priority, the next right thing because sometimes your feelings get hurt. And I am, my son tells me that mama, you have hammers. You've got two-pound hammers and twelve-pound hammers and sixteen-pound hammers, you just got some serious hammers. And that's, that's, he said, you don't have a measure tape at all, but you have hammers in your toolbox. Well, okay, so when you are built that way, it is very hard to sit here and do these things. But what I really want to say is I'm, at the end of these thirty and forty-five days, committed to doing the next right thing. That hurdle is over, winners, losers, whatever it is, that one's here, it's put to bed and I'm committed to being one commission and going on facing the next issue and doing the next right thing. And I appreciate, um, the, the people who, who watched it, who gave me feedback and who just encouragement. That looks really hard. I know you're, I know you're in it for the right reasons. So for these, these people, I can only believe that we're all in it for the right reasons to do the next right thing. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gordon, I'm up. I just, uh, I've got a letter in my hand, I'd, I'd like to read it, but, uh, the top line says to Wayne County Board of Commissioners, I'd like to redirect this, this letter. And it goes to the gentleman sitting in the front row here that, uh, uh, worked for the county and road department and, um, all we, all we did or all I did was make a phone call and, and, uh, I won't, I won't thank you, but I won't read this letter to you. Said, I'd like to thank you for the recent attention given to Joe, Joe Naya Road. The addition of the rocks to the road allows families to reach their loved ones at Cotton Grove, uh, during rainy weather conditions. The road would become close to non-functional and, uh, was true hazard to the staff who must travel the road in order to reach their employment. Is also a concern for emergency vehicles to reach facilities in case of need. Uh, we who have family members as residents of Cotton Grove are very much appreciative, uh, for these improvements. Thank you.
Job well done.
Yes.
Yeah, I did see it after y'all put the rocks down.
And we, and I got a, this, this is from Tanya, uh, uh, Odom Highsmith. Um, I got a thank you card at home and we just don't get this. You know, we get the other end, we get complaints. It's always nice to, to, to get something like this. But thank y'all.
It's a little easier to do stuff like that when you got people that work at the road department.
Yes.
And that credit goes to.
Yes.
Yep.
That it? Yes.
Uh, make sure you tell them, we appreciate them, all of y'all.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, we, we are just stewards of money, of the taxpayers' money, that's all we are. We, the, as Jamie said, you know, at times we all take beatings and in our hearts, I'm, I ain't even going to be able to do this. In our hearts, we feel like we're doing the right thing regardless of whether people have false information and think it's not the right thing. I don't think any of us would intentionally do anything that we thought was wrong. That's just my own personal thoughts, but I think in our hearts, we want to do what's right and, um, it, for Commissioner Hickox to say that, you know, just, you got to keep your head, I've been doing this for five years and Mayor Hickox, you know some of the battles I've been through and, and we do, we, we go through them. Commissioner Thomas, I don't know how you do it. Anyway, no comp, yeah, that's right. Well, I, I'm just thankful that we're all willing to, uh, do what we have to do to com- continue to serve the public and, and be good stewards of their money. Um, awesome group we have up here. It, I, I don't care, you can look on Facebook if you want to, but I'm telling you, it's an awesome group. I've worked with every one of them and they're all diligent and doing their work. Every one of them fact checks, um, to make sure, Commissioner Hickox just said that she put it on Facebook to get some feedback from them. Um, that's a tough thing to do because a lot of times you get negative feedback and you have to decipher through what's best for the county and I think that's what we all do up here. And, uh, couldn't do it without the, I, I'm not even going, every county employee we have, I'm, I'm not even going to try to start mentioning them, but you know who you are and we thank you very much for your work and, uh, we, we try to do the best we can and with what we have to work with and with, uh, with the resources that we have. And that's all I have. We, I make a motion that we go into executive session for personnel.
Commissioner Hickox?
Yes.
Commissioner McCrery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Gordon?
Yes.